All this meeting to order of the City Commission of Rio Grande City is a Wednesday, August the 8th, 2018, approximately 6:00 PM. Commission's chambers here at City Hall 53.
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, is that what I said, or did I say something different?
6:00 PM.
8:00 PM? Alright, moving on, so 6:00 PM. It's 5332 East US Highway 83 here in the Suerte de Rio Grande City. City Chambers at this time will have the invocation and pledge of allegiance. We'll have the invocation by Commissioner Garza followed by the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Ramirez.
Good afternoon. Father, dear heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to get together to conduct city business. We ask that you guide us to make the best decision for this city. We want to thank you, Lord, for all the wonderful blessings that you have brought upon this community, and we ask you that you continue blessing us. We ask you, Lord, that you bless our police officers, and we ask that you bless our soldiers in arms' way, and we still continue to ask for a ring, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Next, business and orders, item 1B, roll call and finding a quorum. Ms. Peña.
Mayor Villarreal.
Here.
Mayor Prose Garsa.
Here.
Commissioner Flores.
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
You have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Peña. Next, business and orders, item 1C, departmental reports.
At this time, Mayor and Commissioner, I'd like to call Ms. Belinda.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman. Mayor. Mr. Perez, Ms. Beas, Mr. Villarreal, and Ms. Peña. What we wanted to do today is inform you that you did, well, not inform you, but to remind you that you did appoint the new Kelsey Bass Commission members, and we have Mr. David Porras right now present, as well as other Commission members that would like to just have a word and say something, okay? So, at this time, I'd like to call Mr. Porras.
Easy with the dissertation, Mr. Porras.
Hello, Belinda, thank you. Councilman, Mayor, members of the Rio Grande City Council. It's a pleasure and honor to be here again. At this time, I'd like to introduce the Kelsey Bass Museum members, okay? We have Dina Gutierrez, please. We're gonna go one by one, so they can introduce the members, where they come from, who they are, and...
Well, my name is Dina Gutierrez, Porras Gutierrez. I was born in Reston, Rio Grande City, graduated in 1971. I proceeded to go into education in Laredo, received my Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice from Texas A&amp;M at Laredo. I worked for the government. I started with Immigration, Border Patrol, and Customs, retired with almost 35 years of service, retired as a supervisor parent legal specialist. Once that I retired, I came back to Rio Grande, my hometown, and now I did a little bit of substitute teaching, but, you know, I'm getting too old for the children, so I decided to go ahead and provide some kind of service to my community in trying to make it a better and educate our children with our own history that we have here. And I'd like to thank Mr. Mayor and all the Commissioners for your time and believing in us. Thank you, Touchy.
Thank you.
As well, thank you.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. Good afternoon, Mayor. I am Beatriz Brosig, and even though I was not born in Rio Grande City, I've lived here for over 50 years, I think, and I am a Molina on my mother's side, so my roots are here in Rio Grande City. And according to Mr. Perez, I was, I hope I still was, your favorite teacher.
He still is.
And I keep telling him to remember that when I am requesting something. But I did teach in Roma ISD for 41 years. I've been retired for a while, and I have always been very interested in our local history, and everything is just fascinating what we have here, and this is an opportunity for us to present to the people from the outside of what it is that we have and we need to preserve. And I do thank you for reappointing me to this Commission. Thank you for your confidence.
Thank you for service.
Miss, and if we can get with you later on, because we haven't finished the background of Mr. Perez.
After two years.
Our series are historian.
I want to remind you what the Mayor said, even the dissertation. I think all I can only announce, I don't have to repeat anything. All I can tell you is that Rio is my passion. I love it completely, 24/7. So, thank you all, and you really have worked well with us, you really have. It's great to know that we have the City Government behind us. So, thank you all. If you have any questions, you can ask me later.
And our new member, former City Councilman and former EDC member, Fred Margot.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Commission. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Jones and Mr. Porras for giving me this honor of appointing me to this Commission. It's always nice to come back, well, obviously not to this building, but it's always nice to come back to City Hall, because both Mr. Porras and I have a lot of very fond memories of those first years when Rio Grande City was just getting started. History is my passion. I teach AP History at the high school and have been teaching at the high school for the last 10 years. About 15 years ago, I was given the honor by Adelina Villarreal to put together the Robert E. Lee Museum. I don't know what kind of condition it's in now, because I haven't been in there in several years, but if you happened to go in there when it was first opened, I think we did a pretty good job. So, it's one of the greatest honors that I've had, and so I hope that I can continue to work with these fine people, and hopefully we can do that, do the same thing for the city. And again, thank you very much.
Thank you for... Mr. Margot.
Absent Betsy Margot, who's not here, she's out of town, and one of the new appointees, Jesús Correa, also is not here with us. But I'd like to take this time really to congratulate our Commission here. We serve under you. It's been two years, gentlemen, ladies, two years since we started this Commission, and this wouldn't have been possible had it not been for you all. We take a lot of pride in serving our community, especially doing history, but our Commission is very, very into the history of Rio Grande City, okay? For the past two years, as you know, we started from nothing, from scratch, and it's hard, but we overcame a lot of obstacles, but we did some progress along the way slowly. We did the Hurricane Beulah 50 commemoration, which was a big success. History in the making, we had the veterans. We have memorabilia from prehistoric times to contemporary times. How should I say it? It's incredible, the history we have here, unbelievable, and the people from Rio Grande City are coming forward and donating, lending us. We have a time capsule from Hurricane Beulah. At the time, I was about seven, eight years old. There was water everywhere, not a drop to drink, so Long Star Beer brought us quarts of distilled water in beer bottles, and we have one of those time capsules there at the museum, never been opened. We also have some prehistoric artifacts. We have a sea oyster found here in Starr County. We opened it in 2004. We have a Texas mammoth molar from prehistoric times there at the museum. We have a bubble gum slot machine from probation, the 1920s. We have a telegraph from the railroads when they used to telegram from Chicago to Milwaukee, the train going south. We have it there at the museum. We have a 48 flag star United States flag. We have a most important and sacred place here at the museum is our Starr County War Heroes Room. We take big honor in that room, because we have our war heroes there. We have memorabilia there from the Civil War. We had one soldier that enlisted in 1864 in Brownsville, Texas with the Union forces. We have from World War I, we have a lot of soldiers from World War II, and most important, we have the USS Starr County battleship, transport ship, served in World War II. It was torpedoed by Japanese miniature submarine, survived, came back to port in San Francisco, went back to action in the South Pacific. It was sold for scrap in 1974, but we have the picture of the USS Starr County. The only ship in the entire United States Navy then after a Starr County, after a county, sorry, in deep south Texas, the only one. And that is a fact, the USS Starr County, and we have a picture of it there, and we're deeply honored to have that picture there. And of course, we have a lot of memorabilia from World War II, and one of a kind in the entire continental United States, a genuine North Vietnamese communist medical kit with American medication and Canadian medication intact. We have it there at the Kelsey Bass Museum. These are some of the memorabilia that's been brought to us here, and we were really honored to have it there. And thanks to you all, your support, this has been a very successful event. Now, some of the projects that's been undergoing, of course, as you all know, we did the bricks, close to $12,000. We're gonna start working on Phase 2. We're doing the philanthropists, people from the past that made Rio Grande City possible, and their contribution to the current events that are happening now is because of the past, what they brought, what they did. We're also doing with the Rio Grande City timeline from Christopher Columbus, the Indians, all the way to the present time. So, we do have a lot of work, and we're gonna do again the Veterans Day in November, Bakero's Day, so we've been getting busy. And in closing, I'll cut it there, Mayor, and just take in consideration your support for the budget that is coming here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porras. It's really our privilege and honor, actually, it's really our privilege and honor as a Commission to work with Commission members that dedicate the time and the effort to really make something special, and you all have. I mean, going from charging you with a project with zero budget and still somehow finding a way to make it happen, you know, that's incredible, and it's kudos to the Commission and to everyone that's part of this, of course, our staff members that are part of this effort to make sure that our history does not go unnoticed, and again, I cannot say enough about the passion that we see here. So again, it's ours. We should be thanking you and here on our behalf, thank you for the service that you all bring to Rio Grande City. Again, cannot say enough, so can go ahead and have a... And if you do, it's the honor. We can take a picture up here with the Commission. Like to invite the Commission members, Kelsey Bass up front. We could take a picture.
Mr. Garcia, I do not think that I know like a change rate to...
Yeah, I don't think so.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
I don't understand the numbers.
Okay, one, two, three.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
In honor of time, Mayor, that's it for department reports unless you are interested in a particular area. At this time, we don't have any else. I know we have a little lengthy, but do we have any directors that would like to give the opportunity here more than willing to come up? If not, then we'll move on forward. Thank you very much for your time. Moving on to item 2, consent agenda, letter A, B, C, and D, approval of departmental travel requests, approval of minutes from previous meetings, approval of action taken at the meeting of RDC DC held on July 24, 2018, and D, approval of action taken at the meeting of the Kelsey Bass Museum and Event Center, Commission held on June 26, 2018. Have that information in your package, members. At this time, any questions or...
Mayor, there's no objection, Mayor. Motion to approve items 2A, B, C, and D.
Okay, we have a motion to approve consent agenda, 2A, B, C, and D by Commissioner Ramirez. I have a second by Commissioner Garza, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Moving on, number 3, ordinances, letter A, first reading and approval of ordinance number 2018-5, revising Chapter 16, Section 16-207A1 by adopting a revised schedule for water-related rates.
Mayor and Commissioners, it's around five years from the last time we had a rate study. It ended this past October, so we're up for renewal rate in October. We since then contracted Capex, and you have, you all had a presentation by him back in April. It was thorough in what he looked at, and he basically looks at the surrounding areas and how we stand compared to other cities our size. I know that we specifically gave him instructions that we wanted to make sure that the rate study over the five years would stop some of the subsidizing on our wholesale contracts. So at the end of five years with the rate study in place, hopefully it'll get to that point where we're no longer subsidizing the wholesale contracts. It is a minimal increase, 6 cents on the residential basic, and then it moves forward. And you've got your charge within the ordinance?
Remember talking about potentially not waiting the five years to subsidize. Is there a reason why you have to go and wait five years?
No, he just spread it out over the five years of the rate study and the ordinance. That is up to the Council if you want that changed.
Right, but what's, what's your all's recommendation on that? What did you all consider as we were moving forward on this case and our discussion from last?
Well, I know that Mr. Perez has been more successful with the rural suppliers in their balance to a point that, you know, they're almost up to date.
Correct.
But the amount of time, chemicals, and the energy that is used to provide them potable water, you know, treated water, does not, is not covered by the amount that's being charged right now. So, I don't know if that completely answers your question.
Would you rather do it at a shorter rate, where we're not subsidizing instead of five years, go into like a two and a half or three year?
Well, one, is that feasible, and two, how would that put us or jeopardize any of the operations? It's really the question.
In terms of our operations, it's the same amount of water, it's the rate that would be charged. It would be a sudden impact to their operation and what they charge their customers, because obviously they will take into place the amount that we're now changing. As it is right now, it's about 22 cents per gallon that's being increased, and as it's over the amount of gallons, then the rate is higher as per the chart. Mr. Snowden made it to a point where they wouldn't have a sudden impact if you all put it into one or two or three years. So he spread it out over five years, the duration of the ordinance.
And going back to subsidizing, who are we?
We have three rural water suppliers, El Tanque Water Supply, Rio Water Supply, and El Salz Water Supply.
Are those up to date with the payments to the city?
We're working on Rio Water Supply, is the only one.
And really comes back to that, again, if we're looking at five years, does that mean we're still subsidizing it for the next five years, or at some point do we say, hey, it's costing us more to produce than to what we're getting by selling it?
Normally, at this point, being that there's no growth in their areas, you're looking at every year, it's slightly less and less that we're subsidizing, to the point in the fifth year that we're not subsidizing. If there was a major growth in the areas, and I think we're looking at real water supplies that might have major growth, then that could change. Although, and I think Ms. Sardiselli Science can attest to this, that lately, real water supply has not been purchasing any extra water from us, just the minimal.
Okay, but bottom line is we're okay with this, you all are okay with that?
It's a gradual approach.
And going back to that minimal, aren't they committed to a certain amount of water that's supposed to be bound on the city?
Yes.
And that's the minimum?
Yes, I believe it is.
Yes. We are, we do have attorneys reviewing their current contracts, so we can standardize them all, and inclusive in there, we're looking at, you know, late fees and water rights and all that kind of stuff. So, that's in the works, and that's being reviewed as we speak.
And really, that's something we need to stress on, especially any type of rate payments or the days of going months without payment, and that we cannot tolerate or accept.
And the water rights?
Well, and the water rights as well.
It's up to me, I would cut off the water, sir.
If you go to page, page 7...
Science, do you have anything to add?
No, no, just going back to the water supply, you know, yes, for being on, you know, things like that, you know, get a little bit of oil, you know, so they can be clean and not be polluted.
Page 7, Mayor and Commissioners, 7 and 8, on the bottom, you'll see the way that it increases, and it's by 22 cents every year.
Increments.
In increments, and so by October 1st, 2022, their rate would be at 3.44, $3.44. And it's the same for all the three suppliers, the same rate.
And right now, it's at what?
$2.
$2.
And it's been like that for the past five years at least, so. And when you were asking about some other type of fees, we are also working on that. I know we've been back and forth communication with Jeff as to some of the other fees that are necessary, and I think water rights was also part of that. We do have a fee as part of our subdivision regulations for every acre developed, every 2,500 acres developed, every acre developed is $2,500 that they have to pay, but water rights are scarce, and I know around this time, you already look, Science is already looking at renting out some water rights, and our city is growing and...
So how do we make that part of the package then, as far as to make sure that we're getting water rights as well, as part of the contract?
Could it be included maybe in the second reading? In the second reading? I know there's already communication on the type of water rights.
Okay. Well, at this point, staff, it's okay with Commissioners?
Yes.
Any other, can I hear your recommendations to approve based on...
Yes, sir.
This time, we do the first reading, so we still make any adjustments for the second, should we need to?
On the second reading, yes.
Second.
Alright, so any questions, or do I entertain a motion at this time?
Alright, I assume movement.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item 4A, oh no, mistake, it's item 3A, first reading and approval of ordinance number 2018-5, revising Chapter 16, Chapter 16-27A1 by adopting a revised schedule for water-related rate by Commissioner Garza. We have a second by Commissioner Ramirez, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, business and orders, item 4A, City Manager Reports, discussion and possible action to approve a proposed tax rate for tax year 2018. 4A.
Mayor, Commissioners, Ms. Garcia.
Hi.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, hi. I'm Laura Garcia, and I'm here today to present to you your 2018 effective and rollback tax rates. I've calculated these rates in accordance to Section 2604 of the Property Tax Code, and I have used the 2018 certified appraisal rule given to us by the Starr County Appraisal District, as well as information provided to me by your Finance Department, and your tax rates for this year are as follows. Your effective rate would be .483843, and your rollback rate would be .526433. These are the two rates you have to work with for this year. Whatever rate you propose today will be published next week at the newspaper, and that will trigger, you know, a strict timetable that you will have to follow as far as your public hearings are concerned in order to adopt on time, which would be at this, you know, at this point, I think, September the 5th. So, and that way, we can assure that your tax statements will go out October the 1st or soon after, and we can start the collection process at that time. If you have any questions at this time, I'm more than, you know, happy to answer them.
So Mayor, in your package, you have several memorandums for your approval on the different rates. I've also provided a worksheet that should be highlighting what those changes are. And as an example, the first one, I've given you the average home value, that's $56,698, okay? At the effective rate, I've calculated everything on the right as to what that equates to if you were to go with the effective rate, followed by the current rate, the .49 is the current rate. I did look at, compare the current rate and what that calculation is in comparison to the effective rate. So for example, same household, $56,000 average, at the current rate being .49, comes out to $282. The difference between $282 and the effective rate at the top, the 274, is $7.79 a year, okay? And so, you go down to the next part of the table, I have the rate for at .50, followed by .51, and then finally, the rollback rate at the very bottom, which is .52. So for example, again, the average household being $56,698, at the rollback rate of .52, equates to 298.48. Difference between that and the effective rate is $24 a year. So you can divide that by 12 months.
When the effective is, okay. What are, and really, that's gonna be the underlying question at this time, is what are we looking at? What projects, how is this gonna benefit...
Difference between that and the effective rate is $24 a year. So you can divide that by 12 months.
When the effective is, okay. What are, and really that's going to be the underlying question at this time is, what are we looking at? What projects, how is this going to benefit, because right now we're at the .497579, right?
Correct.
That's where we're at right now. However, we continue to grow, we continue to have the project, projects, so do we stay at that or what's the?
Some of the things we've talked about, and I've met with the different departments, in particular with the PUD and Public Works, which typically have the bigger projects involving infrastructure. And so I've got some information back from PUD as an example, and this has two estimates, talking about possibly going out and extending sewer, you know, for the areas that have already been annexed specifically out there by the midway area. Any increases that are, that would be committed would be absorbed by one of those projects alone, okay? So it's not like you're going to be raising all this revenue and you can do 10 or 15 projects, multimillion dollar projects. Given our preferences going through the grant route, but we haven't been able to go out for grants at this time, so we do propose that whatever difference comes in, I also have some paving costs. These paving costs are based on what we need across town and I'm sure Mr. Guerra, you hear? He could probably give you some examples of what he would focus on in parts of, any areas of town that need attention. So within those two departments, I mean, a single project could absorb whatever increase comes in. We could prioritize for you the areas that need more attention and this is in case we are continuing to see delays in grants coming in and helping us or affording us to do more with what we can do ourselves.
Well, we're going to continue moving on grants, I mean, that's for sure.
Correct.
But this time we need to consider the scope of where we're headed here as far as the growth of our city.
Sure.
And many of the projects, when you have 35 miles of roads, let's say you're doing the city at a cost of what per mile? What is the cost per mile, Mr. Guerra?
Just a Just an overlay, Mayor, it would be 145,000.
145 per mile, just overlay, that's not even.
Yeah.
Normal street, thirty-five.
The area of a lot of interest and may, and may possibly the biggest return on investment would be the obvious current, the new 755 that, which is the realignment. That alone for, from the PUD department, we're looking at a little over a million dollars just to extend sewer line through the new 755 realignment. Of course, once you do that, if you put out water and sewer in that area, your development will be accelerated. And that's where you would get the biggest return on whatever investment you put in there.
I know it's a, one of those decisions that obviously we need to really consider.
Ms. Garcia, I have a question for you. I'm looking at the last page of the packet here and I'm looking at the last, the current rate, .4975. And then at the end of the chart here, it says tax levy increase, 121,000. Does that mean we're still going to see an increase in revenue even if we set the current rate due to the property value going up?
Right, if you keep your current rate, you'll still see a revenue of 121,000. Because you had an increase in values of almost 5%.
So we're still going to see an increase, 121,000?
That is correct.
Okay, so I'm comfortable with that.
Keep in mind, of your tax rate, nine cents go to pay your debt obligation.
Now, the other thing is, we're not collecting 100% by the way. We're collecting 85%.
We're still seeing an increase, that's my point.
Yes.
Thank you.
Let's see, any other questions before we move on this?
Mister, I do have a question and this increase, how many houses did you say were under the 100,000?
I didn't get the medium, I couldn't get that.
He asked me that earlier today, but that's something for the appraisal district and they, they were not able to give me the information at that short time. I can get you that information later.
Yeah, so at this point, we don't know who will be like directly affected by the, not necessarily affected, but I guess if somebody were to have an issue with an increase, it would be, what is the average value of homes in the city?
Well, the average is 56,000, like he said, almost 57,000. And yes, you have your, your bigger houses in the outskirts of town, but you do have the center of town, which is, you know, most of those houses are, you know, are older homes and they have a smaller value. But we can get to that report later. And you do give an exemption, but to the over 65 individuals only, not per se a home sit exemption, so they're the only ones needing an exemption. Anybody who's elderly and of course your veterans.
Anything else?
No, in order for us to not miss any, as far as the process, it's a pretty strict process and not miss collections in October, we must approve something today so we can go forward. Otherwise, if we don't, we would have to, I guess, incur the cost of us generating our own notices at approximately, what, $5,000?
Anywhere between $5,000 and $6,000. If you're not able to make a decision and we follow that strict timetable, I have to send bills out by October the 1st and usually your, you know, your part of the bill goes in with ours. So if you're not able to come up with a decision where I can mail by October the 1st, because you'd have to allow me time to prepare those bills, you'll have to mail, you know, independently and that's between $5,000 and $6,000.
My understanding from yesterday's, sorry, go ahead. Yesterday I understood from the EDC meeting that our sales taxes were increasing. Are you all right?
Yes. So far, for this year.
So far. But we've seen a steady increase on the sales tax?
Yes.
Compared to last year?
Correct.
We?
Compared to last year, yes.
6% or less?
How much have we increased from last year?
6%.
6%.
6%.
Okay, so we're increasing, let's say, sales tax theoretically 6%.
Correct.
I mean, there's going to be additional property values at a, let's say, 107,000, but minus the 100,000, which is 85%. So let's say we're back to what we originally get this year. All right, so we have four memos at this point, which, what's your?
Well, I think that, I was telling Mr. Perez that Buñita let the public know exactly what we're going to do with this rate increase. And Buñita ear notch it and put it for that particular
Specific purpose?
Purpose. Whether, and there's no doubt, just like Mr. Perez just said, the west side, some of the areas that we incorporated on that end, don't have sewer service. We are looking to incorporate some more possibility and that's going to not, I know it's going to, it's going to pick up the tax volume, but we're also going to have to provide services for those areas, not, not only, not only water and not only sewer, but police, fire protection and a lot of other services that go along with incorporating these areas. So I think it's important that we let the citizens know, you know, exactly what we're going to do with money and
If we decide to, because right now we have four, that stay at the, stay at the 49, which we are right now, or the 52, or 51, or 50. There's four options that we have here.
Correct.
We remain?
Yeah, I personally, Mayor, looking at the, our taxes, taxes, you know, increasing our sales taxes and looking at the property value going up and also, you know, I understand we're going to collect by 85%, but, you know, considering that, we still have an increase of about 100,000, well, 126,000 dollars. I feel comfortable leaving the tax rate the same. I think we owe the citizens of this community to leaving the same and I think we're doing well as it is, so.
And I join, I join with Mr. Ramirez, I think that we have many more homes in that average of 56,000 and I just foresee that an increase for the, for those property owners would be an issue. So I was repulsed and it stays the same as well.
Okay, so 49, same here, Commissioner?
Well, I spoke my piece a while ago, you know, I think that the grants are not there like they used to be in the past and we're going to have to provide these services. And we're taking on, we're taking on more area and we're going to have to provide services for them within, what is it, three, five years? Three years?
Okay, so let's say we stay at the 49, what are we going to do to make sure that we continue managing and operating the growth and continued, you know, let's say we stay at that? Because obviously that's the dilemma we have here, we stay, because obviously it's never easy. Whenever taxes are involved, it never is for any, whether it's two cents, whether it's one cent increase or whether it's three cents.
The only way we're going to make any headway, if you want to catch up, because that's what we're playing here, catching up because we annexed and we've got three years left, to do something, is that correct?
Three years to complete all services.
All services. With these small increases, you, I don't think you're going to get close to. You, we're going to have to be pushing grants and finding other means. There's no ifs and buts about that.
Yeah, that's my point, exactly. I mean, if we go with the max, just rollback rate, we're still, I mean, we're going to see that 140,000 dollar increase, which is like you said, you're going to maybe do a mile of paving, which is not much. I think we have to rely on other sources of revenue to
Yeah, we have to.
Right, so to me, this is not a deal breaker.
What are you basing that amount on, Fernando? Are you basing that amount based on the resurfacing we did?
Yes, sir.
We did?
That's one inch and a half of over there.
Well, that's only, that's only an overlay, that's not considering preparing the base for
Well, on reconstruction, Mr. Garcia, I'm going to
Well, we have an engineer right here, Mr. Guerra.
285,000 on the third round.
And we're already treating the surface without the one, nothing against it, now handling the pressure below ground that under all circumstances, if you're resurfacing the street, you need to take a piece of foundation, what you need to replace in the ground before you resurface. You don't mind that six months later, cutting into your asphalt to fix what you've been having. We went into those cases before, so, I mean, that, that's no matter what, if it looks nice on the surface until a large threat comes up to the, through the asphalt or sewer, construction, whatever, that he has to do in the middle, so that's just an idea, but it takes to surface the street. I've not taken into account doing anything else, so.
At the end, you're, you're going to need your sales tax, you're going to need your property tax, you're going to need your grants and every little bit helps, even if we can't get there all at once, at least we can start looking at doing something every year and getting closer. I mean, I know Mr. Guerra could probably tell you, there's neighborhoods that complain, you know, I've got potholes. You haven't resurfaced in a long time. There's not that many out there, but the ones that complain are, they do make noise, you know, and rightfully so.
Right.
There's some, there's some few streets that, that didn't get resurfaced on, on the last time we
Correct.
Did the resurface.
How many more years do we have on that? When I first came in on those grants, what was it that we started?
The bonds.
The bonds? How many more years do we have on that?
About
Another 20 years.
Yeah, 20 years. But for a city to decide is that bond
Still some time to go.
We won't be here by then.
I think we need to study this thing a little bit more. Or are we here pressed for time to?
Well, if you put it off, you miss the window.
Well, if you need a little bit more time, there is another option, but you'll have to, I mean, and I was prepared for that just in case this happened.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
You'll have to, you'll have to have another meeting on August the 15th, because we'll have to publish by the 22nd and we'll adopt by September the 12th. You'll have to have another meeting next week. And that's like the last time you have. If you still have to make some, some, you know.
We have a special meeting and we can still meet the deadline, or the time, timeframe.
That'll be on the 15th and we'll publish on the 22nd and you'll adopt on the 12th.
Okay, so the question is, do we need more time to study this further or do we?
No, I'm
If the majority is for keeping it there, same, there's no sense in putting it off.
Right, at this point, so, okay, so do we entertain?
If the majority is on the same page, there's no sense in putting it off. We're better off continuing if the majority is on the same page.
Right, well.
Unless somebody feels they might change, they might change their mind, but if you're not on the fence and you're sure, it's best to decide now.
We're not getting so worried, I mean.
Well, I know that I, I've, I've looked at these numbers and I've had several discussions regarding this issue and I don't feel that I am on the fence. I don't feel that I need more time and I'm pretty confident with my decision.
Okay.
You can, I, I mean, let me say, you can always go with a higher rate and, and we can publish the higher rate and you can later decide on a lower rate and we won't have to republish. We cannot, we can always just publish and go lower but never publish, you know, and go higher, so.
So you can change your mind and say, I'm going to go with a lower.
But you'll have to propose and vote today.
Right. Commissioner Jones, how are you on this?
I, I've always been positive where I stand, Mayor, and I'm totally against raising taxes and I stand my ground.
Okay, so which one is it?
The 49.
Point 49.
Okay, so then, this time, then do we entertain a motion, let's move forward then?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, Mayor, to propose a maintenance and operations tax rate of .389458 and an interest and sinking tax rate of .108121 for a total proposed tax rate of .497579 per 100 valuation.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ramirez.
A second. Can you repeat that? I'm sorry. The, the components of the MNO and INS.
It's the first memo, which was the
The current rate.
She doesn't have
Current rate. Oh, you don't have a
Give her a cup.
Yes, but the INS rate is not the correct.
No, it's a 28. .108121.
That was last year's.
Let's make sure we get it correctly. Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
Oh, sí, yeah. So it should be the .097. The INS, the interest and sinking rate.
That's the tax rate for all your bonds, for your long-term debt, to always have money in that bond to pay.
At this time, we need to rescind the motion?
You need to rescind the motion here.
And a second.
Okay, so
Sorry, have you rescinded?
Rescind the motion?
And rescind the second one and the motion.
And then we vote on it and then move, come back?
Well, he needs to rescind it, or he can also say, I'm going to amend the motion.
Amend because there has de novo.
Yeah, because we have
Right, okay, that's what I was going to do, amend the motion.
Yeah, just amend it.
Okay, so the correct rate is the 0.09756, that's the correct rate?
.09756.
65, okay. Okay, Mayor, I'd like to amend the correct, amend the motion I made previous. And this time I'd like to motion to propose a maintenance and operation tax rate of .389458 and an interest and sinking rate tax rate of .097565 for a total proposed tax rate of .497579 per 100 valuation.
A second.
As amended.
As amended.
A second is amended.
Are we good there, Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
All right, so moving forward this time, then we have a motion by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Flores. This time, all those in
I read it.
Go ahead.
Mayor?
Four.
Mayor Proten Garza?
Against.
Commissioner Flores?
Four.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Four.
Commissioner Jones?
Four.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
Moving on to next, you need to
Yeah, you need to declare that it passed. The motion passes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Garcia, thank you, Mr. Yamhead. All right.
I think both numbers were not read correctly.
All right, we'll get it right eventually, all right.
Point 4?
This one, this one, I had a copy of the document this time. Can you focus on the first one?
I read this one.
This one's right, but this one's wrong, but
The first one.
Oh, the first one, the 1389?
It would be .40.
It would be point four zero four.
Yes, well, let's make sure we correct this.
Can we confirm with, Ms. Garcia?
All right. Her time is the charm, I mean.
Can you confirm the numbers?
Yes, I need to confirm. She's gonna confirm with him.
Please confirm the numbers.
I wasn't working on this right away, because I didn't know we were proposing.
All right, so what's the action now? We have to...
Action is to rescind the amended motion.
And we have to vote on that now, right? Because we didn't...
Yeah.
All right, so, we'll get it right.
Hey, maybe you can convince the rest.
Do we play some music while we're waiting, and sing and dance?
I just think we should have taken more time to consider it.
You wanna hear a departmental report?
Any departmental report while we're waiting on the...
Background check of it, though.
My favorite teacher's gone.
My favorite teacher.
Mr. Sines, you wanna give an update on the city white cleanup, and what you've moved ton-wise, tonnage-wise?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, Commissioner. Uh, we had the city whitel清up just last week. We had about, approximately about a hundred and twenty residents show up. It was about twenty, twenty-three and a quarter tons of trash and bulky items and stuff, so we had a good turnout.
Is that going up compared to previous?
It is going up slowly, but it is going up.
How many tons again?
Twenty-three and a quarter tons.
Twenty-three?
Yeah.
Hundred and twenty-three residents, they have to go pick it up.
And they're circling.
Yes.
Yeah. We're gonna have another one here in the last, for the last week or this month, so maybe in the...
Are we open on Saturdays?
No, it's just Monday to Fridays, nine thirty to six thirty.
We should open a Saturday, to have the rollos open for a Saturday, if it's possible.
Sure.
At least once a week, once a month.
So this is what she corrected.
Once a month, because that business is about Saturdays.
Yeah.
So maybe that's something we think we consider in the future, Mr. Sines.
We'll work on something like that.
Something, or minimize one of the days in the week, and then just... On Saturday or something.
Yes, the...
Okay. If it's possible.
Sure. Any questions?
No, Mr. Sines, but honestly, the city is looking closer with all these cleanups, and we gotta continue the maintenance and beautification of our city.
Yeah.
Thank you, I know it's a lot of tonnage, though.
Oh, yeah.
So...
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Sines.
We love the work of it.
Which should be...
Thank you. All right, so, moving back, let's, let's make sure we get it correctly this time, so... Let's ensure, okay. Mr. Villarreal, let's make sure we're, we're doing this correctly as per...
You need a motion to rescind the amended motion that you voted on. So it's a motion to rescind the amended motion you voted on, on section four A, regarding the discussion and possible action to approve a proposed tax rate for the...
Do you even have to write that down, sir?
Motion to rescind the amended motion.
Motion. That was just voted on section forty-eight.
Forty-eight?
Yes.
Okay. That's my, that's my motion.
And then you need to...
All right, that's the motion.
Okay.
We have a...
And a second.
Okay, so we have a, a motion by Commissioner Ramirez, a second by Commissioner Flores, and at this point, we, we vote on it, so...
It does not have to be, this one does not have to be...
It does not have to be. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All right, I opposed. All right. Motion carries. Moving on now. Let's make sure we get it correctly this time. Do we have all the numbers correct before we move on?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, so this time, I'd like to make a motion to propose a maintenance and operations tax rate of point four zero 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 one four, and an interest and sinking tax rate of point zero nine seven five six five, for a total proposed tax rate of point four nine seven five seven nine for one hundred valuation.
I second.
Okay. Good?
Great.
All right. We have a, a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez, we have a... Second by Commissioner Flores.
Mayor Villarreal?
Four.
Mayor Protim Garza?
Against.
Commissioner Flores?
Four.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Four.
Commissioner Jones?
Four.
Motion passes. Moving on. Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Moving on to item five A, appointments and memberships. Discussion and possible action to appoint members to the Vídeo de Cidade 4B Economic Development Corporation.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'd like to begin by just referring to what was mentioned a little earlier. Our boards and commissions all serve at the pleasure of the city council, city commission, and all these fine individuals, they, who serve on all the boards and all these commissions, deserve our respect and praise. I know that Mr. Porras has walked out, I wish he was here, so I can look him and tell him thank you for all the work that they do. We know that we could not get as far as we do in this city without them, and I think Helen Keller put it best when she said that alone, we can do so little, and together, we can do so much. And it's with this in mind that I bring a memo before you to consider the reappointments and new appointment to the members of the Rio Grande City 4B EDC.
Do you need to read the names out loud?
I will do so. So it is a recommendation of the Rio Grande City 4B Economic Development Corporation to welcome the appointment of the following individuals to serve as board of directors to the Rio Grande City Economic Development Corporation. Mr. Hernán Garza III for reappointment, Dr. Javier Di Margo for reappointment, Mr. Fred López for reappointment, and Ms. Flor Flores as a new appointment.
So I'll make a motion to approve?
A motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez. We have a second by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And again, thank you to all our boards and commissions who serve this city with, with so much heart. Thank you.
Thank you.
And very briefly, I would like to thank the EDC and the members and the commission for the appointment.
We're excited you're on board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we take a picture with the commission members? Moving on to item six, agreement, letter A. Discussion and possible action to approve a lease agreement with the Stark County Housing Authority for a building located at two oh four East Nixon Street to be used as a police substation.
Good afternoon, good evening.
Well, change, does this feel like a morning?
Like it lost some sense. It's one of those days. Uh, this is the lease agreement for the Stark County Housing Authority, which is a substation number two. It's for a dollar. Uh, we have been utilizing it. We also have been sharing the building with the TABC, which is one of our ex-officers, he used to work with, is employed there, and he's been working out of that a long ago. Um, it's a dollar, there's not much, you know, to it regarding the expense, and it's another office that we utilize. Um, there, we didn't have internet at that location, and Mr. Rios, the executive director of the housing authority, said that he would, you know, split the cost for that, and that'll, will be there a little bit, you know, more often than we are right now. But it's still being utilized as substation number two.
No issues there?
No issues, no. It just requires...
How, how is that working out there at the...
Well, it, it works out. Our, our guys use the facility, and, you know, they come in and out, and TABC is there. Um, you know, the housing authority is, is good with that, because they have the presence of the, the police department and, you know, TABC, and, you know, if somebody needs something, the location, you know, they're already there.
You ever had any major incidents there since we moved in, Scott?
No, no, we have not.
Good news, very good.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion.
I saw more.
By the Commissioner Flores.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I opposed. Motion carries. Next, business and orders, item six B. Discussion and possible action to approve agreement contract with consulting engineering services with Gilbert J. Guerra Engineering, Real Delta Engineering. At this time, there...
Mayor, I'd like to propose that we table that action.
Okay, we have a motion to table, or, or...
No, I'm, I'm ready to go. If everybody's ready to go on this item, I'm, you answered my question.
Okay.
Okay, so moving on then, what's, what's at stake here?
So we have a renewal of contract. Um, there is a recommendation to increase the contract by a total of five thousand dollars. Um, Real Delta has been very instrumental, especially in the past year, and it will continue to probably increase the ability to get access to them and provide us input. From the PUD staff, Department alone, as an example, we've utilized them extensively in reevaluating the water pressure situation across town. They came in and helped us out identifying that the SCADA was a problem. We got some experts to come in from the asset, confirmed it and fixed it. Uh, as you've noticed, the water pressure across town has been fixed, and we haven't had any issues. I've used them on a regular basis. They're a telephone call away, they never hesitate to show up for whatever we need them. Um, I do have some requests on the table with them, and, and that we're gonna need to take care of. Specifically, one is, we need a roadway plan for the city, which have committed to help us out at no additional cost. That's not some endeavor that just anybody takes for free. It's, it does come with an expense. In this case, they're willing to work with us on that. Um, there is another request that we're looking for a comprehensive drainage plan that we'll eventually have to combine with the county. That will be an extra cost because of all the work intensive, the requirements that go along with it. It's not something that you can just say, I'm gonna do that. Typically, those go, and we've checked around, no less than a hundred thousand dollars anywhere you go. Um, that's gonna be an additional cost, but the road plan itself, and they're willing to work with us on that. Uh, they've been very instrumental with me on, on routine things, dealing with major development. Uh, we've had some construction going on that I've called them up on and made them part, more involved in those projects. So, without hesitation, I, what I'm recommending, I have no problems or qualms that they're worth what we're asking for. Um, again, they're, they're integral part of our day-to-day stuff, not just on these monthly meetings. I don't know, Mr. Guera, you'd like to add anything else?
Anything to add?
Good evening. I don't know if you have any questions. Just to put into perspective, Mayor, uh, the original contract for the city consulting engineer was to take care of subdivision reviews and, and whatever other project were assigned, uh, and that was usually would entail a, a proposal and a separate contract. Uh, through the years, we've made ourselves available to the city, because that's what we do, uh, with the day-to-day stuff, questions, calculations, uh, you know, how much is, is a mile of pavement worth? How do you figure it out? Stuff like that, uh, taking a look at the water system, that's fine. We're not in the business of nickel and diming the city. We don't, we don't, we don't bill by the hour, but if you wanna put into perspective, our hourly rates go from fifty dollars an hour for a CAD guy to a hundred and thirty dollars for a professional engineer. So if you take a median, somewhere around a hundred dollars. Uh, the thirty-seven fifty that I think per month that, that we're proposing to do is, is roughly thirty-seven, thirty-eight hours of time. And I guarantee you, we spend more than that on, on, on a day-to-day basis for the city. So, uh, we're, we're just asking for some consideration, because even though we're willing to take the time, it does take time away from other projects that we do have contracts for to take care of these issues. So we just wanna make up a little bit of the difference.
They're quick to write proposals. For example, the estimation on the PUD side, uh, I mean, within a day, we call them, and they'll turn back around and say, well, this is what you need if you wanna expand your sewer services or water services or whatever. So, I, I have no complaints about their ability to turn things around fairly quickly on short notice.
Bottom line, the relationship has been working well?
Yes.
Good. Mr. Sines?
Yeah, no problem with your research, as I called in, the turnaround is kind of right there in the, the following day. No issue, they did, they dealt with tremendously, and every project that we worked on, working on the future projects.
Okay, so...
Recommendation to accept their proposal.
Okay, we have recommendations, so at this time, do we need any additional information? Are we ready to move on to the side?
Let me just, correct, I think I heard five thousand initially, and I heard Mr. Guera say thirty-seven fifty.
It's thirty-seven?
Yes.
Combined, combined, yes.
Okay. Okay, I just, because we need to prove the contract, but it does say thirty-seven.
Correct.
That's a monthly, monthly fee.
It is, yes.
Okay, so we're good with the...
Well, that was a question, question for the survey.
Well, but let's get it right.
No, it's not combined.
Okay.
No, it's a forty-five thousand per year with a monthly retainer of thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven fifty, correct.
So the numbers would be exactly, make sure we're...
Thirty-seven fifty.
So forty-five in addition to thirty-seven fifty?
No, it's, that's the year...
When you divide the forty-five?
When you divide the forty-five, it's thirty-seven fifty per month.
Per month.
Correct.
For a total of forty-five.
Correct.
And it's not a, it's not a monthly retainer, it's an annual retainer.
I think that's why they say five thousand, because of the forty-five, that it's thirty-seven fifty per month.
Good. All right, so, you know, what's going on today? I think it's all over today.
Been a, been a long week.
All right, so moving on. Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Garza.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ramirez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Yavieja.
Thank you, Mr. Guera.
Thank you, Mr. Guera.
Moving on, uh, letter C. Discussion and possible action to select Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas to provide health, dental vision, package, life, and D to city employees.
Commissioners, this item was brought up at the workshop on August the second. Um, there were quite a number of companies, eleven companies, providing service proposals from health, dental, vision, and life. Um, Ms. Brown and I, we got together, we looked at them, obviously, trying to find that cost savings and maintain a same service or better service for the employees. Um, and the one that came out with the highest score was obviously Blue Cross and Blue Shield. So at this time, we are proposing that you select them, so we can further negotiate the best and final offer through maybe bundling some of the services. Uh, I know Valerie, you've got some numbers, if you would like to know the, some of the rates that were proposed.
The numbers are already in your package.
Yeah. Any additional comments, Ms. Brown, before we move on in this?
Uh, we won't have the final numbers until we, after today, that we can get the final negotiation with them. But hopefully, after we bundle up everything, we can come up with a...
More savings.
Better?
More savings.
As per the workshop that we discussed, at this time, do we...
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor, to approve Blue Cross Blue Shield recommended, and authorize staff to negotiate the best and final offer from Blue Cross.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Garza to approve the Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas, and negotiate some of the best deals. At this time, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I opposed. Motion carries. Next, thank you, Ms. Brown, thank you. Six D. Discussion and possible action regarding the legal service, services contract provided to municipal court, including but not limited to renewing the existing agreement or creating a new contract. Six D.
Mayor and Commissioners, you have in front of you a contract, renewal contract, or a contract agreement for municipal services. Um, this is after working closely with Reno Gonzalez and municipal judge, we've come to an agreement on going forward, and that's what's in front of you.
And what was the exact agreement, so then make sure I knew this correctly?
We're looking at... We're looking at a, uh, cost of, uh, three thousand dollars per month in, uh, unlimited hours based on what the judge was proposing.
Are we good with the contract? Do we have any issues there that would...
No, I mean...
Determination clause is, make sure that we're...
Thirty days.
We don't have any severance packages or anything?
No, sir. And it's thirty-day notice either way if the contract needs to be determined.
It's gonna be the three thousand per month of unlimited hours.
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez.
A second.
Have a second by Commissioner Flores. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. This time we have item seven, executive session, chapter five five one, Texas Government Code, section five five one dot zero seven one, consultation with attorney, section five five one dot zero seven two, Texas Local Government Code, and five five one dot zero seven four, personnel matters, and it's letter A, B, C. And it's consultation with city attorney regarding cost number DC fifteen six oh four. Consultation with city attorney regarding status update and economic development agreement related to St. Ives Development Project. And C, consultation with city attorney relating to personnel matters, section five five one dot zero seven one and section five five one dot zero seven two. It is seven twenty. We're back from executive session at seven fifty-four PM. Moving on to item eight, reconvene into regular session and consideration of action on matters discussed during executive session, including the following. Letter A, no action. Letter A, discussion and possible action regarding cost number DC fifteen six oh four, no action. Letter B, discussion and possible action regarding status update and economic development agreement related to St. Ives, no action. And letter C, discussion and possible action regarding personnel matters, no action at this time. We have a motion to adjourn. Okay, we have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
I oppose.
Meeting adjourned. It is seven fifty-four PM.